There you go, and then I'll go ahead and call off people, people's names. And if I know who you're with, so I'll say, and if not, then please do let us know who you're representing. Okay, it's gonna go down the list here. Monique Ray with the Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Here.
Oh, sorry, here.
Thank you. Pat Frost, Trinity Collaborative Facilitation Team.
Yep, I'm here.
Carol Fall, Collaborative Member. Alden Neal with the BLM.
I'm here, good morning.
Thanks for joining us, Alden. Krista Lark, Mad River Ranger District.
Good morning, I'm here.
Okay, Jerry Cousins.
Hi, everybody, hi to him here.
Todd Hamilton with the NRA.
Present.
Joseph Bauer.
Here.
And is Susan with you, Joseph?
Yeah, she is.
Hi, Susan, there you are. All right. Sarah Akeridge with the National Recreation Area.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Sarah. Larry Glass.
Safe, I'm here.
Arnold Whitridge.
Here.
Susan and Ross Malino.
Oh, Ross and no Susan.
No Susan, okay. Christine Jordan, US Fish and Wildlife Service.
I'm here, good morning.
Morning Christine. Jim Dees with the Six Rivers National Forest.
I'm here.
On the call. Tara Jones, Shasta Trinity National Forest, Trinity River Management Unit.
Good morning, everyone.
And Tara. Lejon Hayman with Six Rivers National Forest.
Here, good morning.
Morning, Lejon. I see Kelly McElroy from Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Morning, I'm here.
All right, and Bob Morris is on the phone. Morning. And Kenneth Baldwin.
I'm here.
All right, and I'm Kelly Sheen with the Trinity County Collaborative Facilitation Team. Is there anybody on the meeting that I've missed? Doesn't look like it, so take it away, Pat.
Okay, so agenda check, are there, I put this together with the difficulty of people not being around during the July 4th holiday week and that sort of thing. So are there any adjustments to the agenda, changes, additions, deletions that we need to need to deal with? Kelly, I noticed we don't have anybody from the Watershed Center on the call at this point.
Yeah, that's, I noticed the same thing.
Anybody? No, okay, we'll roll with what we've got. One thing that was missing in the general business is if anybody had any comments, additions, changes to the minutes from the last meeting. So if there's anybody that has any substantive changes, please let us know.
I'm gonna go ahead and, I'm gonna go ahead.
On the last memory, there was a mention of update on illegal grows. Is that just put off, it's not on this agenda?
Yeah, I didn't, because I didn't get the minutes ahead of time. No, it's not on the agenda. If we need to, we could add it, but I don't think we have
Nothing.
Tim Saxon or somebody who could brief us.
Okay.
There was an article in the paper.
Yeah.
But thank you, Jerry. We'll have to make sure we do that for the next meeting. Okay, so.
I'm texting Josh and Jack just to see if we're gonna expect them a little bit.
And Randy, because right up is the Bowerman Ridge Project.
Oh, right, okay. Well, she said she was gonna be on, but I'll text her also.
Okay. Okay, so if nothing else, do we have any, anything from the public? Didn't really see any public, public kind of people on the call. Christine, are you with us for the whole time, or do you have to leave us at a certain point?
Plans to be here for the full extent of the meeting.
Okay, so I'll kind of include you for kind of partner updates when we, when we get to that later in the meeting.
Sounds good, Pat.
Thanks. Okay, so we had a pretty productive and well-attended field trip in June in the North Lake area. And we were looking at two different projects. And we thought it would be useful for the whole group to kind of get a a summary overview of that from, from the perspective of the agencies at least. And then the members who participate and then questions from others. So we'll, just because it's the way it went, I started with the camps project. So that's kind of Sarah and Todd. So, and whoever else they want to kind of chime in, so kind of let them kind of take it away. We met at the Tannery Campground to talk about the camps project primarily. So kind of let them have, have the floor, so to speak. Rock, paper, scissors, who's gonna start?
I know, right?
I'll start, that's, that's fine. Thanks for the kickoff, Pat. So I figure I'll say just a little bit about, you know, the tenor of that field trip and the kinds of conversation I heard. And it was important for us to do the field trip with the collaborative before we kicked off scoping so that we could get your very early input into the project design. And hopefully, what you see in the scoping package is reflective of that conversation that we had in the field. I don't know, since not every single member of the collaborative was at that field trip, would you like us, Pat, to do, I don't know, a five-minute project description or something like that? What are, what are the needs here? Okay, not getting.
I would like to hear that.
Okay, so Todd, maybe you can just pull up a quick map and talk about the project and the intent. And then we can have any discussion. But I really, really appreciated the strong participation at the field trip. Had a lot of folks come out, really good, tough questions, which I always expect from this group. And yeah, it's true. So Todd, I'll take it to you.
Yeah, so I don't Zoom. How do I, how do I share something?
I can, you can share your screen now with the little green button in the lower part of your Zoom.
Cool. What, two, oh, there it is. So it should pop up. And hopefully you guys can read it. It's still in draft, right? So you'll still see the draft watermarks, but this is the proposed action. And you'll hopefully see three treatments. Someone nod their head, yes or no? Are we seeing something?
Yep, yep.
Great, thank you. So overall, you know, we talked about a lot of big picture stuff, kind of why here, why now? So I'll just review that quickly. You know, drought, wildfire, insects, disease, general mortality above, you know, higher than we, any of us would really want. But the rate at which it's happening is kind of going faster certainly than I had anticipated. So we had thought about doing a project over on Shasta Lake, and it's kind of too late there. We believe we can still get ahead of it here on Trinity Lake to kind of focus our attention there. To narrow it down even more, I would love to do all of Trinity County. It's just not feasible, we know that. But, so we've been a little bit more strategic in the idea of being, particularly with the NRA, the National Recreation Area, let's focus on some of the infrastructure that already exists, and then maybe work with that as a starting point. So as a draft kind of look, and what you see at the top of the screen, I don't know if you guys can see my mouse, but you know, we're about 1,400 acres, maybe 1,500 acres, like that. Eighteen individual sites, and we're, you know, that width can vary. But we're calling it furniture or improvements, so tent pads, you know, parking spots, trails, and so forth. We kind of want to work a way outside of that. And it's been defined, reason 500 feet. You guys have some tall trees out there. I know 250 feet is fairly rare. But we're just basically doing two tree heights of the maximum tree, just kind of used additional caution, right? So we're focusing on Trinity Campgrounds, we're looking at just shy of 1,500 acres. We've defined those boundaries based on kind of hazard tree or potential hazard tree distances. And we can define hazard tree, you guys probably all know kind of what that means. But then within each area, we have different objectives. And so we kind of formulated essentially three different treatment types. And so since we have Christine Jordan on the phone, treatment, excuse me, treatment one within campgrounds. Yeah, we have big trees, and some of them have maybe root rot or cavity nesting in some of these. But what we're trying to argue, and I believe we kind of agreed, if you're in a campground, we're not considering that habitat. And it's, and so what we, as a result, we are looking, even though we're in suitable habitat for spotted owl, this is a campground, and we're gonna be mitigating appropriately. But one of the differences here between treatment one and some of the others is that we're not looking at under burning through the campground, right? We'll have piles, if we are doing commercial thinning in there, we'll have big landings. And I'd love to get rid of the biomass instead of just burning it. But any burning would be kind of piles only, no broadcast. And I'll move on to the second treatment two. This is kind of the approach we got to think about. So this is kind of a fuels reduction. So we're looking at those trees that are 10 inches or less, I'd like to go a little bigger. But with, how do we change the structure? Or how do we change fire, potential fire behavior? Or how do we improve just overall forest health, but not change the habitat suitability? And so that's kind of why we're looking at, I don't want to call it thin from below. I always want it thin across diameter classes. But in this particular instance, and I think Ridgeville, the area around Ridgeville is a good example, or south of not Tannery, Hayward Flat, and I'll get you a map here in a second to kind of piece that out. But again, we're not really cutting big trees in this one. And we don't want to change suitability, and you guys have a lot of critical, not critical, you have a lot of suitable habitat for spotted owl out there. And then the third one is, we'd like to do fuels reduction and have commercial removals. An example, that would be one of the dispersed sites, East Fork, it's kind of, well, east of Scroll Flat there on the north end of the lake, where we have a bunch of biomass and fuels, but we also have large diameter trees that are competing with one another. And so there are other opportunities where we could possibly have commercial removal. And Ridgeville is one of those. It's, to be quite honest, I'm kind of been scratching my head on how we do that. Right, it's private access on that road, and we would be barging across the lake when it fills or using Ridgeville Community's transportation system to remove any of that material. And we haven't had that discussion, so it's just kind of, we're spitballing at that point. Later in here, we have prescriptive actions. I don't think we'll get into that detail unless you folks specifically had a question. This was provided to folks at the last field meeting in June. And the intent was hopefully, we have this discussion, but sometimes I certainly do that. I just miss something in a conversation. But this has an opportunity for folks to really dig in and piece out some of the prescriptive ideas that we may have in approaching the overall objectives, right? Safe, healthy, and so forth. Without, kind of continue on, unless there's questions right now, I'll just kind of pop up that map. Hearing none. I think I have the, yes. So I'm gonna scroll down to the bottom, so you guys kind of know what colors were. Each color is gonna represent one of the treatments. So we talked about campground only, that's that 500 foot around the eight sites shown in pink. And that's where we're talking about, it's not habitat. Prescription two is kind of this orangey, hope it shows up orange to you guys. But that's that, you know, biomass, non-commercial removal part. The third one is, yeah, we'd like to do the commercial thinning, but that also includes prescription two, if that makes sense. I'm not gonna go in and just remove big trees without dealing with the small stuff as well. And then finally, the to-be-determined one is this green one, and that's the area surrounding Ridgeville. Again, I just scratched my head on that a little bit. So I'll kind of zoom out, not zooming out. So you're kind of the lower end, Stewart Fort. This is where a lot of our concentration is for recreation areas, as well as a service center. But this is that Ridgeville piece that we would like to look at in greater detail. I do see potential for removal. There are plenty of trees kind of in that 10 to 20-inch range, I believe, do not belong. When you kind of walk the woods, you realize there's been a substantial change encroachment by that species in particular, Douglas fir. Probably doesn't surprise you guys. But then the yellow, this is kind of the areas that we're talking about, just doing fuels treatments. So this is mostly manual type treatments. I don't want to limit ourselves if there are mechanical opportunities to use a masticator or something on gentle slopes. I don't want to take that option out if we can. Otherwise, we're generally looking at manual treatments there. Sorry, so then Alpine View here and Hayward Flat. One of the questions that came up at our last June meeting was the need, was there a need to use some kind of Boric compound to mitigate for a specific root disease? The anosis or hetero-bacidian. And if it isn't present, then why in the heck would you use it, right? There isn't that soil condition that is conducive for that, that type of root disease. We did find one in section 11. However, that was dated back in the mid 80s. And so we don't have any current, at least certainly not in the last 10 or even 20 years of a known hetero-bacidian infection site within one mile of our proposed treatment area. So right now, it's looking like it won't be a recommended use for that Boric compound on our trees greater than, depending if you're in the campground or outside. It's looking like we may not need that, that additional treatment, which is, if you guys don't know, the Boric compound used to be called Sporax, that was the trademark name. We now use something called CelluTreat. Both are registered in the state of California. One is not available anymore, the other one still is, it's in liquid form, that CelluTreat. Basically, they just took 13 mule train Borax and turned it into liquid form. But again, I just wanted to bring that up. I did do some homework, and we didn't find any. What is hard to see on this map also is these little tiny, they look tiny, but the boat-in only campgrounds, right? Access is pretty much boat-in, and we're looking at getting those as well. This piece to the south here, that's where I think we can tie in larger, so there could be commercial removal that ties in with the campground treatment. Whereas south of Alpine View, I don't see us doing commercial removal. It would be a fuels-only treatment. Kind of finish up moving up to the north here. We have Jackass Springs. I'd like to get as much around there as possible. That Doug fir is thick throughout, and we're seeing a lot of large tree mortality in both pine and Doug fir species. Density is just killing us, folks. And then finally, at the north end here, this is that East Fork where I do see potential commercial removal and the need thereof, but not necessarily. This is really, as you guys know, I know it's pretty oaky, it's more Savannah-like. And I'd see very limited amount of manual treatment, but boy, that sure would like to see fire down in there. All that is just kind of based on what I'm calling windshield forestry. I drive to these sites, I have some ideas, I take notes, I'll walk around each unit and kind of figure out what these differences might be. And that's kind of what I presented to you guys is generally kind of that big picture, where do we go? I went and took a look, we kind of came up with an idea of some different treatment options, and then provided some very prescriptive ideas in hopes that you guys had the opportunity to kind of chew on that a little bit, and then provide any kind of feedback that you see where we're missing something, or we're falling short, or we're going too far. That, that's kind of the background I was hoping to provide for you guys. And hopefully that, that, that was stopped sharing here. Hopefully that answers any questions that folks might have, or provides that summary for any of the folks who weren't able to attend. That was kind of the down and dirty version. So unless there's questions, that's, that's really all I had to provide.
Okay, that's great, Todd. Some people, questions, comments, thoughts at this point? When, you probably said it, but remind us when you think you'll begin scoping?
I believe consensus is mid-August, so we're looking at about a month. Now, if there's anything we need to chat about, you know, now's a good time. I don't think it'll delay that timeline, but you know, if, if all of a sudden we realize something, or the collaborative realized something, that'll just delay it a little bit. So earlier, the better. But I also recognize it's gonna be complex, and there's a lot of details.
And 30-day scoping period?
I want to say yes. I don't think it'll go 45, and I don't think it'll be 10, so I think that's fair. And being recorded, so I guess you can quote me on that.
Okay, so I have, I don't know if anybody else has a question, but I noticed from the map actually in June and forgot to ask about it, and then today. So nothing for campgrounds up north of, of the lake, along the river? The Trinity River Campground, are they included or not?
So yes and no. So this, like Scott Mountain, way to the, way to the north end, right there on the divide.
Yeah.
Looking at any of that. However, one of the original things that we did do during stand exams, inventory period, is we looked at places like Preacher Meadow. And so Preacher Meadow is not necessarily on this project, Trinity Campgrounds project, but it is being covered under the Bowerman. We kind of did a little switch-o, change-o. So you are correct, like even if you go southeast Weaver is not being treated under the Trinity Campground project. Only stuff within the ASH, it's an administrative boundary, and that's all it is. But we're only looking at stuff within the National Recreation Area boundary.
Okay. So you wouldn't be doing Eagle Creek and Horse Flat?
Correct.
Okay.
And Horse Flat is one of my favorites.
Yeah, and nothing around Lewiston, nothing around Lewiston Lake, none of those campgrounds either?
Yeah, so again, it's one of those where we did do inventory, there certainly is a need. But we had, we kind of pulled out of that one, so we can focus our attention.
Okay. Great. So anybody, anything else for Todd or Sarah on this?
That's great.
Well, go ahead, Joseph.
Well, no questions really, I just wanted to put out a reminder about opening up the stands too much in those areas, encouraging brush for the next person to deal with some years down the line. And of course, keeping in mind the, the chemical restrictions here in the county. I think you want to look for longevity in your treatment. So those, those stands will stand as you want them for a long time before they need to be treated again.
That, that's a tough one. Because you're bringing up really good points in that we want to thin it, we want to open it up to provide a healthy forest for the, for the trees that we leave behind. You don't want to open it too much to where then you create a whole nother problem. And so there's gonna be this balance, this fine line. You know, and not changing suitability in the habitat by law type stuff. So it's gonna be tricky, right? There aren't gonna be guarantee, any guarantees. But I have every bit of confidence that, you know, we'll be, we'll hit the mark. And it'll be a lot better than it, than it was or is. But you're talking about something that you're hitting the mark. That is the hardest part to do in finding success, is reaching that, that balance between the two.
Right. This is, this is Bob, can you hear me, Kelly? Yes. I wanted to thank Todd for addressing the pesticide issue out there. I appreciate that very much. Thank for speaking from safe.
You're welcome.
And Todd, we, I think you said there would be a firewood component, you know, either a small commercial sale or the ability for the locals to come to the campgrounds and get firewood and potentially even have open days where the gates were unlocked, if they're normally locked. Okay, you got that? Great, thanks very much.
Yeah, just kind of reiterate, the, the commercial side, you know, that's not, to me, that's not so much for the community. But when we do it under personal fieldwood permits, and we like shut down sites, we'll probably have decks ready for folks to cut off of, and we'll open that up. And it, to me, it's, we're all helping each other in that situation, so that is definitely on the board.
It doesn't even need to be decked up. I mean, they're used to just, you know, when the
Yeah.
Forest Service goes in and does hazard tree removal, they're used to them just leaving the drop in the trees, and people will go. The difficulty has been, some of the previous environmental documents haven't included firewood. And then they haven't kind of come up with an option to go in and open the gates, you know, after September. If people want to go in and collect firewood in October before it snows, the gates are locked, so.
Yeah, and I think that's something we can, I'm not good at social media, but I know there is such a thing. And we can, we have Facebook sites, and I think there's ways to communicate directly with you folks and advertise. This is the period of which we're looking to do that, get your fieldwood permits ready. And it's gonna be hosted on these, and we'll have some kind of administration there. We always have at least one person there, so you know, one bad apple doesn't screw it up for the rest.
Okay, thanks very much.
And, and the social media of choice seems to be in the North Lake is called a flyer.
Fly, oh, hey, an actual flyer, like, I love it, yes.
Well, you send them, and we'll post them, and people will go there.
I like it.
And the pine will still be there when they're done. Okay, so if nothing else on the camps project, I see we have Randy with the Watershed Center has joined us. And I guess kind of this would be Forest Service and Watershed Center kind of project. I guess that would, I don't know if that's why Kelly McElroy is on the call or on Zoom or Tara. So I guess Randy, maybe you can start it off on the Bowerman Ridge shaded fuel break project.
Yes, certainly. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to chat with the collaborative. And the Watershed Center and the Forest Service are working together on developing the Bowerman project and doing the environmental compliance document. And we've been making very good progress with doing surveys and figuring out what's out there on that piece of ground. And we had a really wonderful discussion, I thought, during the last collaborative meeting during our field trip, where we showed everybody some of the representative areas of the project. And I will admit, you know, we're probably not as far along as Todd and And I will admit, you know, we're probably not as far along as Todd and the NRA is with their Trinity Camps project. Um, we're at the stage where we're kind of drafting up the items that, uh, Todd presented this morning on the call, and so that's sort of the thought behind the field trip and you know, checking back in with the collaborative today is we, we'd love to hear your, your field feedback about what you saw, um, out in the fields and, um, what the discussions brought up for everybody, um, a month ago and we'll, we're hoping to target, um, scoping by, uh, more early September and August, just so that we can get the feedback, start bringing the details together. The scoping document will come out and folks will have an opportunity to comment on it. And so, um, we're right around, uh, twenty-five hundred acres, um, maybe twenty-seven hundred, because we added a piece of treatment, um, along Highway Three where Forest Service, uh, manages, uh, strip the land along the highway. And so that was kind of a late addition in the process, but we've had the archaeology crew out there doing surveys and they're done, um, at this time. Botany is still working out there and, um, the hydrology and watershed folks, um. So we've made really good progress on getting to know that piece of ground so that we have our ideas of what are the constraints, what are the concerns as we develop restrictions and treatment areas out there. And I apologize, I was going to have a map today, but, uh, we had a deadline come up and it kind of changed my plans a little bit, so I, Nick and I were most curious about feedback from the group, um, on today's meeting. Um, I'd really just rather hear from everybody about, um, what you all saw out there and what you're curious about when it comes to project development.
Okay, folks, so thoughts, question, or I guess Tara, do you have anything to add at this point, or Kelly, from the Forest Service perspective?
No, I was just expecting the Watershed Center to take the lead here. Um, I, uh, our discussions on site were, uh, incredibly valuable. Uh, and I look forward to those discussions with the group, kind of, um, helping shape the, the direction of that project, so. Um, I appreciate Randy taking the lead and, and kind of laying it out there for you guys, and, and I know, um, our staff has been working diligently with the Watershed Center as we, uh, you know, help them kind of take on the NEPA planning, uh, part of this puzzle.
Anybody, any, any, any questions, comments, thoughts for Randy then?
I, I just had, uh, so I drive up Highway Three every day and I see your crew out in the hot weather slogging up and down the road, so, um, they're awesome, thank you. Um, that's got to be a killer job. Um, I just had one question, which is, um, at the field trip, um, I asked about, uh, the Bowerman boat ramp, whether or not you guys had looked about um, clearing around the boat ramp parking lot, because that is a evacuation point for Covington mill, so, um, do you know if you had a chance to look at that and, and how extensive the clearing might be around there to make that a safety zone?
I, I think we're still in discussion about that, trying to get out to the field, um, as a group and look at it, uh. So I, I believe we'll have time this coming week, uh, to follow up on that and, and look at, uh, the site conditions out there, so, yeah, um, I apologize, we haven't quite gotten there. Uh, we're trying to get all the field work done so that in the later parts of August, we can be, uh, preparing the scoping document, um, and writing it all up.
Okay, yeah, if you get a chance to look at that, I, I saw on Todd's map that it's kind of in the purple, but, um, because it's, it would be between the boat ramp and Alpine View, but, um, you know, uh, when I've talked to Xander, he said that that's part of your project, so I'm not exactly whose project it is. But I just, um, wanted to convey that, um, in the CWPP, that's identified as a safety zone evacuation point, but right now I would not want to send people there because there's just so much fuel right around it, so. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, and I know another piece is there's some really great work happening around the evacuation zones, um, in the county that the Fire Space Council is working on, so I, I know I had a hope that that work would get to the point where we could, um, consider the Bowerman footprint, uh, uh, along with the evacuation route, um, work that's been done.
Yeah, I mean, it's because Covington, Lower Covington is only one way in, one way out. People are afraid to go out with the current conditions, so they would run towards the lake. And so, um, right now, the lake's low enough, they're actually going to be on the low lake bed, but if the lake comes up, their, their mindset is to run to the parking lot at the boat ramp, so. So that's a big, huge paved area, but it's just surrounded by a lot of really brushy fuel that would burn really hot. Okay, anyway, thank you.
So Arnold.
On the, uh, field trip, Nick Goulet made the case that, uh, what we're, what we should be aiming for in the long term is um, a landscape, a resilient landscape that will have fire on it, but it will have enough diversity of structure, um, so that the fire doesn't spread so easily and the result will be, um, more mosaic. I thought he presented a pretty good case for long-term, uh, planning. In the shorter term though, we, a lot of the places we looked at, for instance, Preacher Meadow, which seems to be an endless expanse of kind of even age, young stuff, won't have the diversity, uh, that will stop or mitigate or mediate fire. And so, um, maybe a little more effort might be necessary and required on, in, in some areas for the, the short-term primary purpose of a fuel break. So I guess Randy, I want to know, uh, if you have, um, a clear trajectory or direction on, on this issue and, um, how do you balance the, the, the long-term, um, vision, which might depending on your implementation, might require less work upfront and the, the short-term needs, which might require more work upfront?
Um, I, I think there are a lot of complexities to your statement, Arnold, and I guess the way I tend to think about the near-term and long-term is the more we can get overall density and fuel loading, both living and dead biomass, um, in line with, um, a more managed condition than what we have now, you know, uh, we have, uh, uh, we all know, we have this accumulation of biomass and and anything we can do on the landscape to start reducing the living and dead biomass is going to have a direct benefit when the inevitable fires happen. It's, I, I'm not sure that we're planning for fires to happen, so that, um, to me indicates some sort of decision to, um, have that activity happen. But the fires are happening irregardless of whether we want them or not, and so what I tend to think of is how can the fires interact with the vegetation out there in a way that there'll still be a, a living stand some canopy, um, in the area after the fires go through. And the more we can start working and having the environmental compliance done, um, it will naturally fall into place if we're thinking strategically from project to project, how it all hangs together. So, but I, I don't think there's a short-term concern that maybe we're not making all the landscape changes, because at least the acres that we treat will weather the fire, um, better. So am I getting at your question, or is there a piece that I'm missing in there? And, and the way I tend to think about it and, um, what I think, uh, the Watershed Center is trying to advocate for in the upper Trinity, you know, with the, um, multiple efforts to triage that landscape and figure out where we want to go next after the Bowerman and after Trinity Camps and the fine work that's happening across both management units, um, and our partners, STI, I know they have that, their good work that they're doing up in that area and it feels like it's all kind of coming together into, uh, hopefully a perfect storm of positive action to start shifting potential fire effects um, a- as we implement projects up there. So I asked you if I was getting at your question and then I just went on, I apologize.
You're getting at the question, um. I agree that, uh, if we do anything, it'll help. I agree that, um, a lot of judgment will be required, a- as always. I'm what I'm left with is, uh, at one point, we had, we were talking and, um, Nick seemed to say that we don't need to work too hard here because of this long-term vision and, um, because, you know, I think he is willing to give it up in the, in the interest of the long-run, um, vision, or that the, the extensive implications of, of giving it up wouldn't be too bad because of his, the diversity vision and, and I, I just don't know how you figure that out and, and how much risk we're being, we're willing to take. So, you know, all I can ask you is what your direction is and you've, you've tried to give us your, your, uh, your sense of your job, so I guess that's good for now, I just, it's something I, I worry about and keep my eye on.
Was it the maintenance piece that you're talking about, um, when this, uh, you know, uh, I think sometimes, um, we worry about returning to each and every acre and then what, how I tend to think about that is you have your initial treatment and then the maintenance will come together as we have sort of multiple projects doing that initial entry and that's where you go from project to project related uh, level to hopefully the landscape scale maintenance. And how does that connect to strategic areas and the good work that's being done on these fire sheds and pods? And how it all hangs together with human infrastructure like, um, roads and then natural topographies, so um, things like ridges and what, the edge of the reservoir, I mean, there's a lot of things potentially you could see into on the landscape, but I'm not sure, I think what Nick was referring to is maybe the feeling that we have to have a plan for maintenance on every single acre that we initially treat. And maybe that's where you go from the project level to the landscape level, how are we maintaining, um, kind of fuel loading and overall condition at the landscape level? At, at least that's what I took from what Nick said.
Yeah, you might be right, I think, he, he probably was more interested, or he probably was, uh, directing his remarks to, uh, maintenance returns. How, uh, how, however, uh, as Joseph just pointed out a little while ago, uh, your idea of how soon you return will affect, uh, how much work you do now and then the message I got from Nick, and I should have talked to him about it since then and I haven't, so I apologize, but the message I got was that, uh, we don't need to worry about so much about return because, uh, the first effort will help with the diversity and the um, resilience of the landscape and, um, we can't be returning to every acre even if we wanted to, so, um, so we don't need to worry, but, uh, you know, that, like I say, in ten years and in twenty years, we or whoever's around will have the opportunity to think about whether this acre needs, needs more, but just upfront, we're, we're planning to, um, not, we appear to be planning to not come back to all the acres as often as, as we have been thinking in the past.
Yeah, I don't know, I think the interesting thing is you never know what's going to happen in the future and if you, um, get too caught up in the ten years ahead and, and never get that initial treatment done, then potentially you don't have to worry about ten years because we'll just be in a worse condition than we are now. I mean, I think I, I've lived in Trinity County since nineteen ninety-eight and, you know, there are things that we had been hoping to play, uh, plan projects out there and it didn't happen for whatever reason and, uh, fire came through and, um, completely changed what we thought we could do there, and so I would say let's get the treatment happening because when the inevitable fire comes, it would be great if, um, that areas were more resilient, that, that there was green living trees after, uh, the inevitable happens, so.
It will, certainly it will help, I agree, uh, and I just leave, I, I think I'm done, but except I would like to leave with the comment that, um, what we do now is partly dependent on, uh, when we think we'll come back or how often we think we'll have to come back and I'm doing something now and expecting natural fire to, uh, kind of run its course in the future is, um, risky, it might work, it might, and it might be the best choice, but it's, there's a risk.
So Tara, then Joseph.
Um, I just wanted to add, uh, you know, to address Arnold's question a little bit, um, you know, one of the things with the, with the wildfire crisis and the tenure strategy is we are asked to not just, um, not just take a look at it in, in, through a lens of today, but also, uh, to factor in the maintenance and clearly we have so many acres to treat, it will take, uh, some strategic, um, foresight to plan on which acres are critical for maintenance and, and how we go about doing that. The other thing Nick mentioned is, you know, not, not every acre, m- maybe we'll get prescribed fire reintroduced to it, but there are, um, there are ways to mimic the effects of prescribed fire using mechanized equipment, either, you know, some mastication or, or thinning of the biomass, um. So I want to say, I guess, uh, I think if we focus on getting some good species diversity, if we return the forest to a much healthier state, um, which is less competition for, you know, light and water and, and we get more water, um, back into our watersheds, I think that our forests will, will get healthier. And, um, and we can also look at, uh, some of the natural features that served as fuel breaks in the past, like, um, meadows that are completely, you know, they're encroached upon now and oak woodlands and, and things that happen naturally, um, in a healthy forest that we, we just need to get back to that and then be really strategic on the acres that we do go back in and, and maintain to protect our community, so. So Arnold, I think, I think you're exactly right, it's going to take, um, some foresight, it's going to take, uh, a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of, uh, putting of heads together to, to make sure we're, we're implementing the right areas and that a maintenance plan is factored into, uh, the, what we're doing right now. And, and you're exactly right, and that, that is important, and factored in that brush component as well, so. Um, those are things that I'm expecting us to do on the west side and especially in Trinity County, and I, and I think we're starting to take steps in the right direction, you know, stands that are, that are thin- You know, stands that are, that are thinned out, that have that more natural, they have you know, some smaller openings, just like you'd see in nature, they have that diversity and structure and, in vertical composition and, and crown. I think once we start to get there, we'll, we'll have something that works. And I'm really looking forward to our next field trip where we can kind of look at what that might look like on the landscape and, and kind of see something tangible in the forest. So I really appreciate the question, Arnold, and the thought that, that went into it.
Thanks Tara, Joseph.
Well, I just think if we're trying to create a fire-resilient landscape, all these treatments, I think, need to be, reduce the fuels to where you can introduce fire onto the site. And then don't forget about it, like happened to all those plantations on West Side, but lay the groundwork to go back every 10 years and burn these sites again. I mean, this is a fire-adapted landscape, we can't walk away from it, we have to keep introducing fire at the intervals that Mother Nature would have brought fire to the landscape. And it's, it's a waste of money to treat something and then walk away from it and have it return to conditions that are not fire-resilient. So I just think we probably need to do a more complete job and then follow up with it in order to ever succeed having a fire-resilient landscape.
Great, thank you, Joseph. Okay, anybody else, anything else for Randy? No, well, thank you very much, Randy, appreciate it.
Thank you, very great discussion.
Okay, so next up is actually Jim Dees and maybe Kristen as, on a quick discussion about celebrating Public Lands Day. This, well, the Recreation Committee heard short description of, of this at its meeting last Friday, and asked to have this put on the agenda for today, because I believe the Mad River Ranger District is beginning to plan, plan out a Public Lands Day event. So kind of take it away, Kristen and Jim.
Well, I don't, thanks, thanks, Pat. I don't have a lot to say other than to introduce Jim and thank him for his dedication of calling in while he's on assignment. So I'll let him go ahead and make his presentation, thanks.
Thanks, Kristen, and everyone. So Kristen emailed me a few weeks ago when something came out from the National Office about National Public Lands Day and inviting us to register events so they could help promote them. And she asked if I had any ideas. And I had just bought a new kayak and been out paddling on Ruth Lake. And the lake, I'm guessing most of you have seen, is beautiful. But when you actually get out there and start paddling around, it's got that typical bathtub ring effect with all the litter and old camp chairs and bottles and cans and tires and all kinds of stuff along the lake shore. So it's a real juxtaposition between the, the beauty of the lake when you're just standing there looking at the whole lake from a distance, and, and then what you get when you actually get up close and start paddling along the shoreline. And I, I grew up in Alabama, where we had a coastal cleanup every year, and had thousands of people come out to clean up all the creeks and rivers and along the beaches, and we called it the Coastal Cleanup, and the motto was always get the trash out of the splash. So I reached out to Ruth Lake Community Services District and talked to Caitlin Canale there to see if they would be interested in partnering with us on a lake cleanup. And she presented that idea to her board on the 12th of this month, just a couple of days ago, and they were enthusiastic about the idea. They also would like to bring in some other partners, she's talking about the 4H. And let's see, one other group she mentioned. Anyway, they're looking to, to bring in as, as many other local groups as they can. And I told her that was, you know, a great idea. I'd love it if the community took ownership of this and made it an annual tradition. And the other details, we're still brainstorming. So we just got the official go-ahead. We're hoping to have some promotional posters and flyers ready by the first weekend of August. And we would love to have anyone here that has a mailing list and constituents they can reach out to, to help us promote the, the event, that would be great. Other things we're talking about, a couple of people now have suggested that we might want to offer lunch or something, so people go to a zone, we're going to set up different zones along the lake shore and have someone there to pass out trash bags and gloves and litter pickup sticks. And they go to a zone, they volunteer for flowers and pick up a bunch of trash, and then maybe have some kind of meetup spot at the marina or one of the campgrounds where they could come by and have a celebratory lunch afterwards. That, you know, would require its own planning, so we'd need to brainstorm the best way to do that. And yeah, any other ideas anyone has for making the event more successful would be great.
Great, thanks, Jim. Any, any comments, questions, thoughts? No? Okay, well, thank you, Jim. Kristen, any, any, any wrap-up for that?
Um, you know, I just want to thank Jim's dedication and, and the fact that he's been going to the Recreation Subcommittee, I think is a, a great way. I've been wanting to get more involved with that. So now that we have him here, you know, look, look for more, more involvement. So I'm hoping that you guys can find a way and interest to be involved with this, because I think it's a, a really great project. So thanks for the time, appreciate it.
Cool, thank you, Kristen, thank you, Jim. So the next thing on the agenda, I don't know that we have a presenter for unless it's Randy, and I don't think it probably is. But the Watershed Research and Training Center is, is applying for a grant. And I think the application is due July 22nd, so it's coming up a week from now, to the Sierra Nevada Conservancy for a, a planning effort for recreation in the North Lake area. I don't have any other real detail about it, other than I think it's a, a large planning effort. I do know that they originally Watershed Center wanted to get a, get support from the Trinity County Collaborative, but when I explained to them that we weren't meeting until today, and what we do is make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors that it wouldn't be timely, because there wouldn't be another Board of Supervisors meeting between today and their due date for their application. So I suggested to them that they go directly to Keith Groves as the Supervisor for District One, to get a letter from the Board of Supervisors, which they got at the board meeting last Tuesday. So that's pretty much all I really know. I suppose at some later time, we could get a, what is this going to be, unless Randy has, Randy just came live again. So Randy, do you know a little bit about this? You're, you're kind of breaking up pretty bad.
I'm going to turn off my video, you hear me?
I, I'm on the, the Watershed Center Board, and we approved the submittal of the application by the Watershed Center this week, I think. I can't tell you a lot more about the, the details of the project, but it, it is a large area and, and the Watershed Center is concurrently working on acquiring a lot of timberland in the Trinity headwaters, in the, in the words above the dam. So it's, you know, it's concentrating some planning and analysis in, in that area. For this recreation grant, this recreation grant proposes to work on a lot of areas and trails. I, I'm not sure it excludes the wilderness, but it, it, it works on a lot of areas and opportunities outside the wilderness to kind of spread the load, the recreation load, and attract more people to the shoulders of the wilderness, if you will. But that's about the level of detail, I can sum it up without five minutes of homework somewhere.
So a couple of little things I do remember is that Jack from Watershed Center did tell me that one of the things that would be in that planning effort would be the multi-use trail around the lake, and Ross has been advocating for, for a couple of years.
Yes.
So that, that is a piece of.
Ten years.
Ten years, okay, okay. And one thing that the Recreation Committee asked me to pass on to the Watershed Center was a, a request that the planning effort also include, include an analysis of boat ramp accesses, because as we experience more and more droughty years with lower and lower lake levels, that clearly the driver up here for recreation on the lake is going to need to include a lot of improvements to getting to the lake when it's a lot lower. So I have passed that on to the, to Josh and, and Jack.
Jack, probably.
Yeah. So a, a, a quick note, Randy was breaking up, she sent a chat that just said, bad connection, Josh and Tracy are working on this recreation proposal, she can reach out for some more information for the end of the meeting for a Watershed Center update. So we can say, sure, if, if they can kind of circle back in towards the end of the meeting, we've got time, we'll see what they've got to say. And I guess from that, we'll just kind of, kind of move on and starting with more updated kind of things. And I think we have Alden representing BLM, so we have BLM updates. So what do you have, Alden?
Yeah, sorry, I just took a drink of water right when you called on me, so I'm here and ready. So my first update is for the Resource Management Plan. The public scoping period just closed for the Notice of Intent period for the Resource Management Plan on 6/28. We probably received hundreds of emails, or sorry, hundreds of comments that came in through e-planning or through emails or through the regular mail. So we are currently working on inventorying those comments and developing a scoping report. The next steps for the RMP would be to start working on the alternatives, and we will, we'll do that by taking in the public comments, working with cooperating agencies and tribes. And, yeah, and so those alternatives will inform the decision-makers kind of on that range of ways that we can manage the land, the BLM lands. So is there any comments on that? Sorry, I got off my script a little bit. Comments or questions?
Anybody, any comments, questions on the Resource Management Plan?
Uh, this is Jerry. I, I thought we were supposed to have gotten a PDF of that. Did it come out in, in, I, I guess I didn't see it, so I was wondering if it did come out.
Yeah, so the scoping, our scoping report hasn't came out yet, but we did, you know, it did open for public comment, it was open for 60 days, so it's been open for a while.
So Kelly or Pat, did a file come through?
I don't know that one came through the collaborative, no.
Okay.
I didn't see one either.
Okay, I'm just taking notes real quick.
Okay.
Alden, if you wanted to, if you could send that to myself or to the collaborative facilitation email, we can forward that out to the rest of the group.
So am I sending like a letter to provide comments or?
Just whatever your standard, you know, notification would be for, for that. It's like when we normally like, when the Forest Service is going to scoping or something like that, or has some sort of like press release type of thing that is about that, you know, a particular project, then we would just usually forward that out to the group.
Okay, I really hope that did get sent to you guys, but I will check on it. So the next project, I'm going to share a map. So this is for Little Browns Creek. This is for a project that we've already gone through public scoping, we've already completed the NEPA. And earlier this week, we had a pre-bid walkthrough for fuels reduction out here in these two green units. So the, what's going to be happening is it's going to be hand-cut pile and then by the contractor, and then in-house will burn the piles. So we had that pre-bid walkthrough this week, and nobody showed up for it. Hopefully, people didn't need to see it in person to make the bid. So the bid for this project closes next week. And this project is being funded with the bipartisan infrastructure law funding. So that's all I got on that project, is, is there any comments or questions or concerns?
Uh, this is Bob, can you hear me?
Can hear you, Bob.
So I wasn't quick enough, but on your first topic, the RMP scoping, I got notices from about four different places that that was happening. I don't recall who they were from, but I got lots of notice, just FYI.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Is there any comments on Little Browns Creek and the hand-cut and piling we're going to be doing out there?
Just glad that it's getting done.
And then, does the project envision burning the piles?
Definitely, yeah. So the piles will be burned in-house by our fuels crew, probably within the next eight to, eight months to a year after the piles are built.
Alden?
Was there, I guess I was not aware that you guys had gotten this far with, you know, this particular project. I mean, I remember, you know, we did the, we helped you guys out with the, the actual NEPA and all that on this specific project, but I guess I, I don't recall hearing anything about it actually going to bid, you know, versus us potentially doing it. So I was just, I, it's new, this is news to me, I guess. And I don't know if it was actually shared with Chris Cole, our program manager for Forest Health, or if you were willing to take bids from us, or, or how that would work.
Yeah, I mean, it's still open for bid right now, but I will check in with Rob Winkler and get back to you, Kelly.
Okay, thank you.
So this, this is Bob again, I don't understand why, but I got multiple notices of the pre-bid walkthrough, so.
You must be on the right mailing list, it sounds like.
Apparently, or the wrong ones, I don't know.
Or multiple lists.
Yeah.
Okay, what else you got, Alden?
Okay, next project is the community, Weaverville Community Forest project that we've been working on for the last few years. So this is going to be a DNA to our programmatic VEGIA that we have, so it's really to protect infrastructure, like roads, so you're getting these buffers off of, you know, the highways, roads. It looks like on here, we have some, some no-cut riparian areas, also in blue. So what I was going to say about this one is that we are finishing up the wildlife surveys and the archeology surveys. And so with the DNA, the NEPA actually kind of goes a lot quicker. So we're thinking this should be wrapping up later, this, the NEPA should be wrapping up later this year, and then we will be working on this project FY23. And then this will also be funded by the bipartisan infrastructure law funding.
Cool, any questions on this project?
Yes, this is Bob, yet again, I'm really glad to see this project on the horizon and always chime in about no treatment in riparian zones. Definitely altered treatment, but definite treatment is necessary from years of watching riparian areas get nuked by two cents.
Okay, all right, I will take that down as a note, and that would be good, that would be a really good comment for. public scoping for the Resource Management Plan, but I will note that right now, Bob.
Thank you. Just altered prescription in riparian zones, but not a no treatment.
Yeah, it might. I might have not summarized it correctly from what's going to be in the actual NEPA documents, so. All right, the next project is the Oregon Mountain Timber Sale. We're wrapping up our chapter three for that EA, and that's really the analysis portion of that NEPA document. So today is the deadline for our resource staff to get that that chapter finalized. We are still waiting on some inventories. And once, so what we're going to do is we're going to kind of like keep moving the NEPA document forward. And we're really waiting on a couple of last minute inventories that we should be done by September. So by the time they're done, the document will be like almost that almost done, and then we'll be able to to kind of push it over the the finish line. So I know that you guys have been out on some field trips for this project. Do I have a? I don't have a map of it, so. Is I know, is there any concerns or comments on that?
Bob, your little box is lit up. Nope.
Yes. So Bob, again, appreciated the field trip. I really hated butting heads with Heather on that field trip, but she was talking about forty percent canopy retention and then the conversation became fifty to sixty percent and none of those are jiving with. Years of collaborating to come up with a agreed upon seventy percent. And I understand it's variable. It's not uniform across the landscape, but I just cringe whenever I hear forty percent thrown out there. So rush response. We all know how that goes, and that's the reason for that. And anyway, I hope that's reflected in the document, the draft.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it sounds like we should probably send the final doc or the draft document out back out for public scoping to review that.
Well, and certainly to the Community Forest Steering Committee, Alden.
Yeah.
Is there a draft out for that already, a draft document?
No, we are, you know, we are finalizing that last chapter of that.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
The way that we're trying to like kind of push it forward and get the the survey done kind of doesn't work really that nicely for the scoping. But it does sound like there are some issues with that canopy retention that we do really need to have that input on. So I I wish we could figure out a way to kind of get that information before we go out for public scoping and just kind of get that doc. I kind of talk it in a circle, but it would be better to figure out a solution to our problems and get that document done as soon as possible, so we don't get pushed into the next year. Because we were trying to, we were really hoping to get that thing. You know, the NEPA done this year and put it up for bids. Maybe this fall, but it sounded like it's going to probably slip. So I guess I guess I'll brainstorm with Heidi and we'll try to figure out a way to get that thing going in the right direction.
We had. I said Heather instead of Heidi, sorry.
Yeah, we Alden, we had talked about a subsequent field trip, but we in June, but we weren't able to pull that off. All right, any other projects, Alden?
Yep. And then did this did this map change for you guys?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so this is the Reading Indian Creek expansion project. So in two thousand eighteen, we put together the original Reading Indian Creek project, and that's denoted in the red chick files. And so what we found is that we we needed to do a little bit more to kind of break up the fuels out in that area. So we're adding in these two green units. I don't know. Have you guys ever seen any of the units out there that have been completed for the Reading Indian Creek Project?
Yes, I have. This is kind of, I have, and they look good, but I can't quite understand your map because it's such small scale. Kind of you blow it up a little bit.
Did that get bigger for you guys?
Yep.
Okay. So we wanted to add in these two. They're just really dense, brushy areas. The canopy is, you know, really suffering. A lot of the pines are dying and falling over. So we were going to go back in here and do some hand cut pile, and we were going to do a decision of NEPA adequacy on that two thousand eighteen document to add these two units. We would still be doing cultural surveys, wildlife surveys, botany surveys, and we would also probably put it out for public scoping too. But it would just, we could do the DNA. It would just save us a lot of time at the NEPA writing. So is there any?
Question, I yeah, I've got a question. The, I think it was a watershed project that they did for you guys where they they used a little masticator on the north side of Indian Creek Road, but they didn't do the south side adjacent to that. And I wonder why that was.
So are you talking about this unit right here? Then I've got my hand.
Yes, I am.
Okay, so you're talking about this other side?
Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, so we are adding that in for this for this new project.
Excellent.
Yeah, because that ridge is super overgrown. It's it's really great habitat for the elk that live out there, but they need to have a little couple of places blown in so they can get around out there because it's so dense. It's a struggle. So so, yeah, we're.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions for Alden?
And then I have one, two more projects. So we're we're continuing to work on the wrap project with TPUD and WAPA to widen the right away, the power line right of ways through Trinity County. We're currently working on that draft EIS now with the Forest Service and other agencies. So that's just an ongoing project that we are contributing to. And then Steiner Flat Campground Improvement, you know, the campground's been closed for over a year plus now just because of the the fire risks of having that campground open. So what we're proposing to do is to upgrade those facilities in there and put in more campgrounds and make it into a more formal campground and reduce the fuels in the area and thin out a lot of the trees. And there's also a new trail component to that project. Super early preliminary, kind of just working out the working on the proposed action now. So maybe by the next time we meet, we can have a good, we could do a presentation on that.
Okay.
Alden, do you, I'm sorry, maybe I missed this, but Wendy, do you have a propose? I mean, like, I was just out there at Steiner Flat Campground, going to one of the swimming holes there like this week. And so what's your timing like to reopen?
Um, reopen in the next year, question mark?
So possibly next, next season.
Yeah, next year. I mean, I think at a minimum, we need to, I mean, like, kind of that first step would be to to kind of clean up all the the vegetation and hazard trees in there. And then the second step would be to like really work on that infrastructure, adding some ball toilets, adding some more. It it would just become like a nicer place for people to go to. So it kind of bring up the overall user base out there instead of it being kind of a scary place to go.
Yeah, it's pretty overgrown. How long has it been closed?
It was closed last year in the summer.
Wow, okay.
I mean, it's open. It's open for people to use it. It's just not open for people to camp there. Like, you can go down there and go swimming, but we're just not, we don't have the campground open because we just don't have the ability to to say that it's not going to be a potential fire threat to the to the community out there.
Yeah, it's it's dense, like in through there. That's great. Thank you.
Great. So anything, any other, any questions, comments? Anything else, Alden?
That's it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're at force. Go ahead.
He did. So thank you.
Go ahead, Arnold.
I'm done.
Okay. Okay, so we're up to Forest Service updates, and I didn't divide it out in the agenda, Six Rivers versus Shasta Trinity. So maybe we'll start with Six Rivers. Kristin, are we expecting your forest supervisor to join us today?
Sorry, Pat, I was having some trouble there. Yeah, my.
Alden, can you, Alden, you're working on stopping sharing? There we go.
Okay. Yeah, my understanding was Ted was supposed to be here today. And with Rachel, they were going to call in that I guess they haven't done that yet.
Haven't seen him. No, we're running a little ahead of schedule, so.
Okay. Well, I, if you want, I can give you a couple little brief updates, and then if Ted shows up, he can he can add in. Okay, so I I'm going to lead in with the air curtain burner. I wanted to let you know that Nancy and Jay have been running the air curtain burner pretty much nonstop since we we've had it the last few months. We did shut it down over the July fourth weekend. But up until then, the numbers I have are five hundred and ninety-two tons of material has been burned through the air curtain burner. And ninety cords of firewood have been produced out of that. So very successful program. And one of our other districts, the Lower Trinity District, is looking at purchasing an air curtain burner with the disaster funding, just just to throw that out there. So so that's been a great program. Additionally, what we've been working on this week, and one of the reasons why Randy didn't call in right away, is we've been finalizing our Joint Chiefs' proposal for this next three-year funding round. And so that's due today into the region. And then the final submission is due August fifth. So Lejeune's been working on that as well. So we're putting in the the Six Rivers side about four and a half million dollars is our request, and it's about a million and a half each year, give or take, is what we're looking at doing. And so that's going to help fund well, leverage rather, I should say, our August complex disaster funding that we got. If you recall, I think I've mentioned it before, the Three Forests got forty-four million dollars for disaster funding for the August complex, and we're working through that, spent in that project. The the August Restoration EA for my district is a big portion of that disaster funding and what we're going to use the Joint Chiefs' money for. Of course, we have our other projects in there, which are pretty much the same as last year. In terms of that Restoration EA, where we are on that, Lejeune Hayman, as you guys probably now know, is my and our specialist, and he's been working through the response to comments and getting the draft decision notice Fonzie and Draft EA prepared to go out. So we're getting pretty close on that. As soon as we release that, then there will be that forty-five day pre-decisional objection period. So potentially, we could have this signed by October first if everything goes off without a hitch. So that just remains to be seen. So those really are our big projects right now. We're acre woods. We are working towards getting that advertised towards the end of the month. The re-cruise is going on right now, and I have specialists taking a look at the project footprint to, you know, just make sure that we're good there. And for the most part, we are. I don't anticipate any issues there. So we'll be able to re-advertise that timber sale that we had to pull during the August complex. So the new repackaged is about seven hundred and fifty acres, and we're anticipating about four and a half million board feet out of that project. So it's 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 the same analysis that we had previously. And I think I'll stop there. Those are the main load of work that we've had. So does anybody have any questions for me?
This is Bob again.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Kristin, how many acres was it proposed before the August complex? You said seven hundred and fifty acres post-August?
Yeah. What did we advertise? I want to say it was about a thousand acres, give or take, and about twice the board feet. So we had, I think our crews, we had estimated it was somewhere around nine, nine and a half. So the portion that was damaged, both in the actual fire itself and as contingency lines, that portion of acre woods is being analyzed under the Restoration EA. So we do plan on treating it. It's just not going to be a green timber sale.
Thanks for the clarification.
Of course.
Other questions, comments for Kristin?
You guys are too easy.
You were being easy today.
Thanks, I'll take it.
This is Jerry. Just wanted to say nice report on the burner and making firewood available in the community. Just.
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah, we've we've got, that's a well-oiled machine there. No pun intended.
Okay. Great. So Tara, I guess Tara and Sarah, is Sarah still on? Tara, like you kind of take the lead on Shasta Trinity for now.
Okay, and just to let everyone know that that's, you know, part of the reason Kelly McElroy is on the call. She's our ecosystem staff officer. So the old Lois Shoemaker position, Kelly McElroy is in that position now. So she's here at the forest level for us. Okay, so I'll give you, there's a lot of things going on, obviously. I'll start with fire. As you know, we've had a couple of, well, we've had a very active pre-fire season, season. We had a fire on the South Fork Management Unit, the post-fire. We're very successful in initial attack and in keeping that fire small, working with volunteers and, you know, a really good initial attack effort on that fire in the South Fork. And then very recently had the Flume Fire up north and very similar results. Everybody worked really diligently. We had an engine that was in the neighborhood, our Coffee Creek Engine was up there daylighting the Boulder Lake Trailhead Road. And so they were they were on scene pretty quickly. So I'm very happy with the fire suppression efforts there. As many of you know, our Mule Creek Station is not staffed. Our fire battalion has, sorry, Fire Division has done a good job about ordering resources to keep that station covered. And so that's been helpful. And we have resources coming in to continue to keep that station covered for the summer on a rotating basis. Also, let you know, the South Fork units are all working extended staffing because of the influx of people related to the fair and activities going on in Trinity County. So we've got all this, all the South Fork fire suppression modules are staying on late and being supported also by some of the Trinity River Management Unit resources. So I'm happy with those efforts. That's all going well. And we did also help support the fire in Lewiston with our helicopter and and an engine out of Weaverville. Okay, so that's what's going on there. So moving into planning. We're so working on McFarland, August Phase Two, we're working through with the Fish and Wildlife Service on a couple of issues related to those to that project. Well, McFarland and then making sure that that aligns with what we're doing on August Phase Two. So we're working on that. As well as we're still moving forward with WCF, the Weaverville Community Forest Phase Two Project, which will add another nearly four thousand acres of planning available in the Weaverville Community Forest. As we discussed, we're working on Bowerman, working with our partner who's doing the planning, but but staying tied in and helping with that planning effort as well. Starting the preliminary assessments on Monument post-fire, got some staff out looking to see where county roads and private property are impacted by hazard trees and and firekill trees in the communities. So we're doing some of that legwork now. We have a number of special use projects going on right now. A lot of them, too many to list. But one that does include is Carville, which is a very small NEPA document to address some critical fuels near that community, so we can get some of that work done quickly. Also, Um, also, um, we're, uh, moving on to implementation, um, we're doing some work out of McFarland. We took on some work at, in River. We're looking at using, um, an emergency procedure to take on and get some of the hazard trees, the critical hazard trees around, um, some of those high public use and high severity areas in the River complex footprint. So that would include, um, the roads that lead to the Boulder Lake Trailhead, as well as some roads leading to private property, um, and the Goldfield Campground area. So looking to get, uh, those hazard trees cut and removed off the landscape, um, for public safety. Let's see, um, we're currently, um, have active logging operations going on in Brown's Phase 3. So if the group, I know you've expressed an interest in that previously. Um, if you're interested in seeing that, they're expected to be done by August 15th, which is the, uh, the current termination date. Um, also have some logging going on still at Forest Glen in some of the fire salvage areas, doing some fuels reduction work in the Browns' planning area. Um, all right, I think that's, uh, and then working on putting some contracts together in the August Phase 1 NEPA area, uh, using some of those disaster funds to get some contracts put in place to address fuels. We also put, um, quite a bit of money into, uh, our agreements in Trinity County. Um, that total, I think, last, without RAC, about $2.3 million. Um, so that's not including the $1.2 million, uh, for RAC that we're still working through the grants and agreements process. But, so we've got quite a bit of money invested in our local partners. And then staffing, so we're looking, uh, we've brought on additional botanist. Uh, we've added a forester. Um, the forestry and hiring events are still underway, forestry hiring events are still underway. So it's forester, forestry techs, um, and the recreation hiring event has also gotten started. Um, I think that's probably the biggest updates I have for you. Um, we're starting to do some of the very left-side analysis on the bigger planning effort, um, related to that High and Palm Hurt Ranch and, uh, Corral Bottom Big Bar area. So we're starting to do some of the legwork out there. Um, oh, we do expect to get planning effort, like I said, we expect to get WCF Phase 2, continue to move that along and get that done. And we're looking at expanding our, um, current agreements that we have, both with the Watershed Center and with the RCD, uh, to include opportunities to do some planning with those partners. So, uh, I'm excited about that. We also had a very productive meeting with SPI, looking at cooperative fuel breaks out in the French Gulch, um, Trinity Mountain area. All right, I see, Carol already has a question for me.
So Larry, Glass, and Bob, and Joseph.
Okay.
All right, so I didn't hear Pilot Project, what's, what's up with that?
So Pilot is signed, um, that will be getting, I'm just letting you know, we haven't started marking that yet. It's still on our agenda, and sorry, on our schedule to get to. Um, we just had to, we finished up River, what we needed to do out there. We're buttoning up McFarland, and the plan is to at least get started on the marking and to make sure that we get you guys out there to take a look at that. That will happen this field season. I just don't have it, I have to get this Monument, uh, stuff kind of through the, across the finish line as well. So, and also, Larry, um, as I get the.
You've got a lot on your plate, for sure. I, I just don't want you to forget that we want to get out there while the marketing's happening, not like sort of after, so.
I, absolutely, I can tell you the marking hasn't started, and it won't start until we've, we have those conversations. Absolutely. I haven't forgotten, and, um, I've made sure that, uh, our timber management officer is also aware that we're going to have those conversations while we're getting started on the marking. Absolutely.
Okay, Bob, Joseph, and then Carol.
Not me, thanks.
Not you? Okay, Joseph.
Me either, no, I'll pass.
Okay, Carol.
Um, so I was curious for the Carville project, you know, the comment period is closed. Do you know, um, when that might be implemented and who would be implementing it? It was like 11 acres, but.
Right, so ideally, if I had, um, you know, I, Carol, I'd like to not commit, because if I got a cover, uh, crew in to do a cover assignment for us, um, and the hand crew was handy and I had the NEPA sign, I'd be sending them out there to get started on it. So, um, I don't have it penciled in to be, uh, in-house or not, but, uh, but I'm leaving those, those doors open right now, so that if I do get a cover crew in, I've got the signed documents and we don't have a fire, I will send them out there to get that work, uh, started. So, um, I'd like to keep my, keep all those doors open.
Okay, uh, two more things. So for the Joint Chiefs application, um, have you thought about, um, including the Highway 3, uh, fuel break project as maybe part of Joint Chiefs to do the, the NEPA for that or something?
I hadn't planned on, um, having that NEPA done third-party. I'd planned on us doing that in-house, so I have that on our program of work for, if we're doing, if we're doing the High and Palm Burnt Corral piece in '23, I had a kind of schedule for '24, Carol. And I think, um, I think we've got a lot of good work done ahead of time that I can incorporate from some of the, we had planned to do a Rainier project. We've got good, um, relationships with, uh, SPI for some of their AL survey data, um, as well as some of the work that Todd's been doing. So it's kind of threading the needle between a lot of existing projects, and so I was really wanting to keep that in-house. And, and plus, I want to make sure I'm, we're involving the communities and, um, you know, making sure that we've got all the collaboration on the front-end, so that project is well-supported by all the communities up and down that, that stretch of highway, as well as our, um, other stakeholders like Caltrans and Calfire.
I just thought, you know, that we, we weren't successful with the last Joint Chiefs, and, and I was hoping maybe this Joint Chiefs, one of the selling points might be that you're starting to do the, some projects in the North County, but I don't know if that helps or not, so.
My copy, I'll, I'll, I'll keep that in mind and make sure, um, at, at least, uh, we're factoring in some of the stuff we could get done, um, under existing NEPA a, as well, Carol, so, so thank you for that.
And the last thing is, I, I just want to let the group know, it's kind of off-topic a little bit, but as far as access to the trailheads up north, um, um, our search and rescue guys were out earlier this week. Um, some guy followed his GPS, I have no idea where he was trying to go, but he, um, drove down the Boulder Lake Trail. So, um, he drove around the kiosk through the parking lot, along the old road, which is about the first half to three-quarter mile till he hit the wilderness boundary. He drove around, he drove down that road, got stuck, and then, um, our guys had to pull him out. So, um, anyway, people, people are going to the trails.
Okay, so Jerry.
So, uh, first lesson there is pay more attention to your GPS, I guess.
Really? What was he thinking?
So, uh, Tara, good to hear about hires. I'm wondering how close you are to, uh, fleshing out two full, uh, planning teams. You had talked about that earlier, having two.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I've got, um, we picked up the forester piece of it. We're looking to add the, um, we're going down the road for picking up another hydrologist. We've got a cert issued for that, so that's a key piece of that planning effort, is the hydrologist position. Um, the botanist we picked up, um, is, is pretty new. Um, she, you know, she's not too long out of college, so, um, probably keep her on some CE's and, and doing some of the fieldwork. So by the time I get up, I think we should be at two full planning teams by the end of the field season, Jerry, if that, that answers your question. Um, I think we're probably at, you know, we're probably starting to augment some of those positions. Uh, probably not quite one and a half of planning teams now, but, uh, you know, by adding that forester. Oh, and if, uh, the other position I didn't mention is we managed to pick up the fuels positions. Those are two really key positions for the work we're trying to get done on the west side, is the two vacant fuels elevens, and we got one of them filled. Um, so that'll be helpful, but we'll need to get that other one filled as well. So I think by the end, um, by the end of the field season, um, you know, Oc, even in October-ish, I, I think we should be close to having those two planning teams up to speed. And I fully expect us to have the two planning teams, uh, by, by, uh, winter at this, at the latest.
Good. And then, uh, did I hear you also quickly mention that you're applying the recreation position now?
Yes, well, so right now, one of the positions that, um, identified as a priority for the, the entire west side is, uh, the GS-12, um, position that sort of sits over all things, um, public, uh, not public affairs, um, but the archaeology piece, the rec piece, and the, and our visitor services piece of it. So I want to get that position. And then, uh, in addition to that, we're not doing away with, um, Sally's old position. We're, we're trying to detail that position and, and we'll fill that permanently as well. So looking to increase our capacity to manage our rec program and all of our agreements.
Great, and then, uh, just one, one last question. How is the experiment of, uh, you being the, the, the whole ranger and having a part-time detail in Hefor, uh, what's your assessment of how that's going?
I think it's serving its purpose for where we are right now. I had this conversation with Kelly recently as well, um, Kelly Sheen. Um, you know, having one planning team and, and it's like having one team and two coaches, and that's kind of where we've been, because we lost so many employees over the last 10 years or so. So we got down to, you know, the TRMU would, would maybe get a, a planning effort every other year, and the South Fork was in the same boat. You had to keep waiting your turn to share the same resource, and then try to figure out what the priorities were for, for Trinity County. So in the, in the short term, it's, it's working because it's giving the planning team, hey, here's the priorities, we're going to get this done, we're going to get this done, and then we're going to do that. So they're not being pulled across the, the two units. They're being, you know, they're getting some really clear direction. But in the long term, you know, right now, one planning team and two coaches is what we're dealing with. But having two planning teams and one coach, you know, we have to have a pretty, uh, that, this may, probably isn't the right solution for that, but that's a discussion that'll be had once we get those two planning teams in place. And, and that, that's been the biggest stumbling block, um, for getting things done in Trinity County, is that we, we lost so many positions and getting down to, you know, hardly any foresters and one planning team between, to cover 1.2 million acres, it, it just, that's not a recipe for success. So I'm, I'm excited about the very near future, getting back to those two planning teams and be able to increase our capacity significantly in Trinity County.
Yeah, and it's, uh, it's nice finally to have money to do that, once you find the bodies.
Absolutely, this is the first in my career, honestly. We've, we've, we've increased our fire staffing, um, in 2000, and, but we, we've never in my career went to, uh, fill holes intentionally and, and really develop an organization that meets our needs instead of just seeing who's left after people, you know, get unfunded or retire. So this is really a, uh, uh, an excellent opportunity and a, and a time for a lot of optimism and, and strategic planning.
Thank you.
Thank you, good question.
So I see Bob has his hand up, but Kelly McElroy kind of came live with her picture. Is that because you have something to add, Kelly?
I was going to add another project, so, um, if Bob has a question for, for Tara, um, Bob, go next.
Okay, Bob.
Thanks, just real briefly, Tara, um, I'm curious why Mule Creek is not regular-staffed, why it's just being covered?
Oh, we just, um, the, the captain, um, that was stationed there, uh, left the agency and went to work somewhere else. Um, and along with that, we had a couple other vacancies, so there really is no permanent staff. Um, and we were unsuccessful in the spring fire hire. So, um, we'll, we'll focus our efforts there. I even tried to, to do some creative things for details to get people in there, but we just weren't successful. So it's not an unfunded situation, it's definitely an, uh, a station that's important to us to cover. Um, we just didn't, don't have any staff to cover right now. So we'll, we're hoping in the, uh, fall fire hire to be more successful and to, and to get that engine restaffed.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, Kelly, you have a project?
Uh, I just wanted to add to the, to the list of projects, um, the Forest Service is working with, uh, TRRP on, at Forest Service, and BLM actually are working with TRRP on a programmatic aquatic restoration EA that is, um, somewhat modeled after the Six Rivers programmatic aquatic restoration EA. So, um, we are looking at scoping for that sometime probably late next month in August.
Okay, great. And I guess, um, Alden said BLM is working with, uh, PUD on the RAP project, the draft document. I'm assuming Forest Services also?
Yes.
Okay.
Pat, I also left off the, uh, project we're working on, the very preliminary stages on South Fork Mountain, um, post, post-August fire, um, still working that out with the Six Rivers and, and our third-party NEPA planner. We expect to get some proposed, um, units out to the collaborative group i- in the very near future. Let's take a look at what, what we're looking at and, and get some input from, from the group.
Great. So are there any other questions, comments for Tara, Kelly? So how about Sarah Acreage on the NRA, any, any, any other updates to cover?
Hey there, uh, just a couple of quick things. We are really focusing our efforts in Trinity County on the Trinity Camps project, so that's the majority of our update. Um, we are also staffing up and are looking to fill a GS-11 forester on the district in the near future to increase that forestry capacity to do forest health projects. Uh, we're also planning to fill some special uses and recreation positions. So fingers crossed that all of those hiring events go well. That's what I got.
Okay, great. Any, any questions, comments for Sarah? No, um, okay, did I miss anybody? I don't think so. Um, so we have other, other items, partner updates. So Recreation Committee met last week, so members of the Recreation Committee, anything in particular you want the greater collaborative to know about?
We had a long, um, discussion about the, um, status of the Minersville Boat Ramp. And so, um, we're going to be trying to, um, write up a, a history, kind of where, how we got to where we are right now, and then, um, meeting with, um, Supervisor Berkey to, um, kind of figure out what our options are to move that project forward, because, um, it's been a long time.
Right. Okay. I think that, that was probably, yeah, that was the, the main, main takeaway from the Recreation Committee meeting. Okay, so Waters, uh, RCDs or updates, we haven't had updates from you guys in a while, so what? What's shaking that the collaborative cares about?
Um, well, that's a good question. I, I know that, uh, our crews, since I don't have anybody else on staff for today, um, I know that we've got all four of our crews up and running, um, this, this season for forest health and fuels reduction projects. Um, they have been, most recently, working, uh, out in Indian Creek. And, um, we have just recently received a fairly significant advance, which means that we'll be, uh, moving on to some of our, uh, actual, like, community-based, uh, projects. Um, we have some work that we want to finish down in Junction City, um, and then I think we're moving on from there into the Lewiston area. Um, let's see. Well, I don't know, that's a, I didn't really put a lot of thought into it, but it, there's, there's a, there's a ton of collaboration that's happening, both on the Forest Service level, we'll be, we've been working with, um, Tara and folks, um, at the Forest Service, uh, to, you know, uh, beginning to provide additional, uh, forestry-related, uh, capacity, um, and what else? Uh, we've gotten some, uh, four of our RAC-funded projects executed, waiting for additional, um, other projects that are related to, you know, some of our less higher priority, um, projects. Uh, but, uh, I'm sure that most of those are, are moving forward through grants and agreements, who was, uh, overwhelmed, I would say, this past spring. Hmm. I'm having a, I'm drawing a blank.
That's okay.
I didn't really prepare much for, for this, because I've gotten out of the habit, I guess.
Yeah. Okay, that, so I need questions for Kelly? Yeah. Okay. So I need questions for Kelly?
I see Ted MacArthur's coming on.
Ted MacArthur's just joined us.
Somebody also has joined us with a phone number of seven, or five, four, four, eight, ending five, four, four, eight.
That's me, Kelly, Christine, with Wildlife Service. We lost internet.
Okay. Okay, so Randy, so any, any updates on overall on, from the Watershed Center that haven't been covered already?
Yeah, certainly. Thanks everybody for covering items that we've been working on. That's been helpful. But we also have all of our crews and crews, masticator crew working. We have three hand crews this year. And some of the workload that we're tackling is in coordination with the RCD and their fire prevention grant. Am I coming through? Okay, I'm just a little serious that my connection might not be great again.
Good to hear you.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. So yes, one of the crews is downriver along South Fork Road. And then we've been doing a lot of work out towards High and Palm. We're planning on continuing work in the Hayfork Valley along Summit Creek and working towards the Little Browns Creek community as part of that fire prevention grant. We also have work across the forest that we'll be planning later in the season. But probably a hand crew will be headed over to the Mad Riverside here in the next month or so. Hoping, hoping that no inevitable fires decide to face our county in the short term. You know how that goes. And then Christine did mention in the chat, and I'm not sure that everybody saw that, but we were able to do a UAV flight along that South Fork Mountain project area, south of 36. And so I'm kind of excited to get that imagery out to the forest and be able to use it as part of the planning for that South Fork Mountain treatment that both Christine and Tara mentioned. Worth, we already updated everybody on Bowerman and we are working cooperatively with both forests to support their both planning and implementation with forestry crews and wildlife crews to further their workload. And then finally, just an update, we, we did work with the T4S and NRCS. The Watershed Center took the lead this year just to kind of help the team, our collective team here in Trinity County on putting together this joint chief's proposal. It amounts to right around $9 million. We did get feedback from last year's joint chief's proposal. And we've been integrating those comments into this year's document. And so certainly very appreciative to the RCD and the T4S and NRCS for giving me the information I need to draft that. And we are about to be awarded the proposal. I'm thinking that Nick probably mentioned it, mentioned it through the Sierra Nevada Conservancy to do the planning in the upper Trinity. We're thinking in the next couple of weeks, we'll actually get that award from them. And we are trying to think through the next steps in the upper Trinity with the next Sierra Nevada Conservancy request for proposals that's out. We're thinking of both implementation and kind of next steps on planning with that grant proposal opportunity. So it's, it's still in the development stages, so I guess I don't feel like I have the time to share right now about those ideas. But we are working to continue to plan our out-year project. So I'm pretty sure that's, oh, I got a note back from Tracy and about the recreation proposal that she and Josh and the other folks in the recreation program are putting together. She has said I can forward on the email to Kelly and it can be integrated into our meeting notes. But it's a vibrant recreation and tourism grant proposal. And it's assessment and, of course, investing in partnerships, create or improve newer existing recreation amenities. There's a general concern about the overall impact on the wilderness due to the increased use up there. So can we be thinking about developing other recreation opportunities in the upper Trinity? And she mentions that Trinity Lake Trail that you guys were talking about earlier, assessing OHV use and opportunities maybe for developing actual sites for OHV. And I think those are the high points. Sorry, but I will forward this to Kelly and he can put it in the meeting notes hopefully just for the whole group to see the full breadth of what Tracy and Josh and the rest of the recreation folks are working on.
Is it possible for Kelly to just email it out to people rather than putting it in the meeting notes? Because the meeting notes take a couple of months to come out.
Oh, okay. Yeah. She was happy for me to share this. So whatever is the best way.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so any questions, comments for Randy and company? If not.
I have one other statement, or one other thing to report out that's, I guess, pertinent.
Okay.
If there aren't any questions for Randy. Hearing none. I just wanted to report out, one of the rack projects that I had mentioned was Guy Covington. And that, that project has been executed fully as of like a week or two ago. So we actually intend to start work on that project. And this may be of particular interest to Carol this next, this next week. So we're going to be sending up at least a couple of crews to start work on Guy Covington for, for what it's worth. You should see our guys up there soon.
Cool.
That's great. Thanks very much, Kelly. People will be so, so happy.
Yeah.
Okay, so Christine, on your call, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, any particular updates or things you want us to know about?
Yes. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that. Everybody's doing such great work and so much of it. There's a couple of updates we have for you of interest. In the recent fall, I guess it was last fall, we talked about barred owl management. And I wanted to let you all know that the notice of intent to prepare an environmental impact statement for a barred owl management strategy that will affect Northern Spotted Owl range as well as the California Spotted Owl range is expected to notice in the Federal Register on July 22nd. We had been aiming for this coming Monday, but we think it's going to be the 22nd. And then there will be a public information meeting in the evening that will be recorded shortly after that notice of intent comes out. And I am happy to share, you know, the, the firm details on that. If there is interest from the collaborative, I can send that to, to Kelly.
It'd be great if you got that to Kelly. He can get it out to everybody.
Okay, I will do that. So that's one. The second update in terms of regulations, on July 5th, the Northeastern District Court in California basically remanded and vacated some of our 2019 ESA regulations that deal with Section 7 and our inter-agency cooperation and consultations. There's nothing that's going to change how we consult with the Forest Service or the BOM. There's just some language changes regarding effects that we'll be going back to, to using. The biggest change with that remand and vacate is to Section 4. And it, it won't affect any currently listed species on the Shasta Trinity National Forest, but there could be impacts on the Six Rivers with coastal marten because that was a recent coastal marten. The coastal marten was listed as threatened after those 2019 regulations came out. And so the service didn't extend the full protections under the ESA 2 that species. They wrote a 4D rule for its management. And we just don't know yet how that's going to affect, you know, how we work with that species, especially with some of our private land, private land managers. So that is an update for you on regulations. And the service will be revising our Section 7 and Section 4 regulations. There's no timeframe on that. But right now, we're, we're basically back to what they were before 2019. More locally, we did work in May of this year with Tiffany Perez with the NRCS on providing some technical assistance regarding their equip funding and other funding agreements that they have with private land owners and managers for lifting the NSO, the Northern Spotted Owl Limited Operating Periods regarding noise. So what we felt like that was a success and, and worked pretty smoothly. I have mentioned to Jeremy Todoroff, who's the, he's the broader NRCS contact that we work with out of Red Bluff, from putting together a more programmatic approach for their programs. But if anyone's got any questions on that, please, you can share them at the end of my, my updates. But we thought that that was a success, working locally to, to help one private land owner get those LOPs lifted so the work could be implemented. We've been working pretty extensively with, you know, we work with the Shasta Trinity, but we also have the Klamath as well as Reading BLM. So I've been coordinating quite a bit with Tobias on the Oregon Mountain Salvage, or not Salvage Timber Harvest Project. And we completed consultation for Little Browns Creek a while ago. But we've continued to work with the Klamath as well as the Shasta Trinity on multiple post-fire project actions. So we do have a high workload now, as does everybody. I'm really sad and disappointed that I wasn't able to attend the two field trips for the Trinity Camps project and Bowerman Ridge because it sounded like those were, had some really valuable discussion and just hope to get out in the field. I've been talking with Todd Johnson, who's the National Recreation Area's biologist. And he's been preparing information, you know, that we share through our Level 1 processes for, for consultation, streamlining. But we're hoping to get out in the field sometime in early August for the camp's project review. And then we are like the BLM and Forest Service working on the RAP project there in Trinity County with PUD and WAPA. And then the larger Region 5 Post Disturbance Hazard Tree Management Project. So we've got two days planned in the field for the Region 5 Hazard Tree Project, July 26th and 27th. And then a day in the field for the RAP project on July 28th. So it's going to be a busy end of July. And for the, we've been working for quite a while on a fuels programmatic ESA consultation with both the Shasta Trinity National Forest and the Klamath National Forest that would cover key ridge, ridge top areas, roadside, fuels reduction, and areas in the Wui. We did a review of a second draft BA at the end of June. We're expecting the final BA and request for consultation to come in mid-August. I don't know if, if we're going to meet that timeline or not, but then we would be preparing a programmatic consultation document that follows that. And it's just ESA. It's not a programmatic NEPA. And then we've got, kind of saved this for last. So we're, we're doing, you know, work just like you all are too, and folks have provided updates on staffing. So our Wyrica Field Office had 20 staff, you know, basically back in January 2017 through last fall. We are now down to eight staff and we will soon be down to seven. But we do have approval to move forward on hiring two additional biologists for our Forest Resources Program. And I don't know when they could potentially be on, but until they are, it's primarily myself. And then we have Mason Seagus, who's been working with us for a little over two years. But he will be leaving to go to the Forest Service at the end of August. So that's our staffing update. And my last kind of question is if there's going to be, or maybe there was, the Pilot Roads and Plantations project, there was discussion at the last meeting, I think, about getting out and doing a sample marking field trip. Is that still being planned or did that occur? And then just let me know if you've got any questions on the update I gave.
So Tara or somebody else might jump in, but on the, the field trip for the pilot project for the sample mark has not occurred yet. And I think we were talking earlier about getting that scheduled. And I think that's when Larry Glass kind of mentioned that to Tara.
Okay, thanks.
It'd be great if you could be on that field trip. So hopefully Tara will coordinate with you.
We'll make sure you know when. Yeah, great. So any questions for Christine? No? Thank you, Christine. That was great.
You're welcome. And I will share the barred, barred owl information with Kelly once I have it.
Okay, great. So we see that we have Ted MacArthur has joined us. We're kind of at the end of our, our written agenda. So Ted, want to join us? Do you have anything in particular you want to share?
No, I apologize for being late. I, I would have liked to have been on, but I had a, another engagement I couldn't, couldn't get out of. I just wanted to join on when I could and, and hear what was going on. I'm sure Ranger Lark gave, gave an update on things that were going on, on the, the Six Rivers. But just, I'm actually here in Hayfork, going to be going to the fair here in a little bit with Supervisor Berkey and, and spending some time here in Trinity County. But just really appreciate all the work that, that you all and, and we're doing together here in, as part of this collaborative. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff on the horizon, a lot of opportunity in front of us. And I'm looking forward to our continued efforts to, you know, work, work for, for our common, common objectives here, here in Trinity County and on, with the national forests in particular. Open any questions folks may have.
Questions, comments for Ted and Rachel if she's in earshot?
She's not here yet. She should be here in the next few minutes. If she does get here before we close, I'll, I'll let you know.
Anything for Ted? Don't forget to stop by the Trinity County Fire Safe Council booth when you're at the fair. Anything, anything for Ted? Are there any other organizations or, or, or subjects that we need to cover? We're ahead of schedule clearly today.
Well, Pat?
Yeah, Kenneth.
I just want to let people know that I am working with NRCS as a technical service provider. Carrie Nichols, who was their former forester, is working with me to service clients basically by assessing project needs and forest management plan interest amongst clients. So if anyone knows of anyone who's in that position, then they could give me a call.
Okay. Great. Anybody, anything else? How about, I guess, Joseph?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. How about August field trip planning? Do we have an idea? Is, is August kind of the time? What, what, what's our, our plan? Anybody have a priority project area to go visit?
Maybe, uh, maybe we should go and have a look at McFarland.
How's that sound to folks?
You know, Pat, I'm, I'm willing to go do that. Um, we did talk about maybe going and taking a look at, um, based on our discussion on our last field trip. We talked about going to look at some, some green areas and, and talk about kind of, uh, what some of that implementation. Um, you know, for fuel breaks and for more, uh, you know, wildlife centric prescriptions. What's some of that, um, some of those prescriptions and, and, uh, forest health opportunities may be on a green landscape. We talked about going to see that chunk of ground kind of between burnt ranch and, and high and palm. Um, that was mentioned briefly on our last field trip. So let me know if, if that's something we still want to do. And I'm happy to, to kind of, uh, share some, um, potential stops with Kelly. Uh, just to look at some different kinds of things, both some, some, you know, fuel break prescription type areas with some, um, oak woodlands type of areas. And mixing in, um, there's even a meadow out there we could take a look at, but, um, that was just something that was discussed briefly.
Okay, Larry.
Yeah, just for my 10 cents worth, Tara, I'm much more interested in going, looking at green stuff, trying to save what we got left and looking at a bunch of dead trees. So.
Joseph, counterpoint.
No, I'm, I'm fine. I mean, there's a jillion places we can go and look at the needs that need to take place there. So I'm fine if, uh, people would rather do burnt ranch, high and palm area, that's fine with me.
Okay. Does that sound like a plan then? So Kelly, Kelly and Tara kind of work up an itinerary and that sort of thing, and we'll get the word out. Um, the date would be August 19th. If we stick with our third Friday. Okay. How about, uh, agenda items for the next collaborative meeting? I have written down the legal robe.
Yeah, Pat, it's Jerry and I just want to, um, you know, today's meeting was another one where the collaborative, so few of us sat here and heard agents. The updates, which is great. Not necessarily anything about that, but we had talked about, um, what else the collaborative could wrapped our arms around. Um, and we tried, or you tried, you know, to bring people in. And maybe I'm just saying, we need to recognize what we are right now and embrace that. So just would like to hear any other collaborative members thoughts.
Yeah, okay. Anybody? No? Okay. Anything else? I'm, I'm kind of at a loss for anything else we need to chat about.
Pat, it's Bob. Is it appropriate for, uh, just a brief rack update to let folks know now that we know a dollar amount of the ballpark schedule or is it premature?
Um, sure. I guess we could. You want me to do that?
Yep.
Darn. Um, okay. So, um, the resource advisory committee is gearing up for its second round of, of proposals. Um, we, we think we have somewhere around $391,000 for the, the newest year's allocation. Um, our, our goal is to have, um, kind of finalize our, our approach to that with a frequently asked questions kind of flyer and advertisement. A, um, a workshop for people who might apply for funding through the rack. Uh, in early August and a, an opening of the proposal period around August 15th. Then going for 45 days with the rack, uh, starting to meet after that and try to wrap up our decision-making by later in the calendar year. Um, I did learn that the current author reauthorization, which was embedded in the infrastructure bill. Uh, reimposed a requirement on the boards of supervisors and SRS counties. And that is in the old days, up until 2013, boards of supervisors had to decide. So secure rules schools, most of the money, 85% goes to the counties and the schools for roads and schools. That leaves 15% uh, for the other two programs, which is title two and title three. Title two is what the rack, uh, is responsible for. The board supervisors is responsible for title three. Under the original law, boards of supervisors had to decide every year, how much of that remaining 15% went to the rack versus title three. Uh, in 2013, that was made like just the reauthorization just said, it'll be the way it's been. But the newest reauthorization reimposes that election process on boards of supervisors. So currently in Trinity County, the board of supervisors' decision from 2013 was that, um, of that 15%, 12% of it went to title two and 3% went to title three. They're going to have an opportunity to reevaluate that the board is and rejigger that, those numbers. Uh, I met with, um, one of the supervisors to talk about it. And, um, I think they're interested because the demand on title three is pretty intense also. And that tends to go to things like search and rescue, volunteer fire departments, uh, community chipping, fire safe events, things like that. Uh, that they might want to increase the amount a little bit that stays in title three, decreasing the title two a little bit. But it'll still, title two will still be somewhere around 390,000, even if they make adjustments. So, um, that's kind of our process. Uh, we're trying to get our process done earlier than last year. We finished in early January last year. And we learned that that was clearly not enough time for, um, the grants and agreements office to process the proposals. And turn them into agreements by the beginning of the field season. So that's, that's the perspective of the rack chairman. So Tara as DFO or Monique as partnership coordinator. You got anything else to add?
Uh, Pat, I think you, I think you summed it up and explained it really well. We all had the opportunity to go through some, some trainings the last few days, um, and participate in some webinars and that, that was super helpful. Um, yeah, no one, no one had anticipated quite the extent of the bottleneck in the, uh, in the grants and agreements process. We knew it would be slow, just didn't realize quite how slow and it's a nationwide problem. So I really appreciate the rack, um, you know, taking the bull by the horns and, and looking to get, uh, be the first in line to get our agreements in first. I'm in the new fiscal year. So, uh, I put in the chat, Pat, I did reach out to our fuels staff. And I made sure that even if there's a fire and, and the, the typical, uh, people that you would talk to are off forest. We've got, will have some continuity in place so that if you need to talk to a fuels person, there'll be somebody that you can, that we can talk to about it. So I appreciate the rack working so hard to, to, you know, help us manage the, the difficult grants and agreements process.
Okay, Monique, anything?
No, you summed it up pretty well. Um, I agree with Tara. Thank you so much for all your help on the rack. Um, we did have 18 agreements that are now being processed, um, through the rack. Um, but other than that, we will start soliciting for projects some, as you said, August 15th. Uh, we'll be putting up those updates on our Shasta Trinity National Forest page, um, as well as likely the RCD, but.
Right.
Stay tuned on that.
We have a number of collaborative members who are on the rack and I, Arnold, you raised your hand.
Well, I think it should be said that, um, the grants and agreements process was really bad this year, but, um, it might not be so bad in the future. They, they, you know, they didn't have the right people. They didn't have experience. They didn't have the procedures. So, uh, although it didn't work for us to have our work done, our rack giving its work done in January, this, uh, this past year. It, it should be a lot better next year in the normal course of events.
Yeah, I hope so too. Any other rack members want to jump in? No? Okay, did I cover it, Bob?
Good job, everybody.
Okay. Well, unless anybody has something else to add to the good of the order, I think we can call this a wrap. So look for information on the field trip in August.
Thanks for your time, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Go, go, enjoy the fair.
Go to the fair.
Thanks a lot. See you next time.
See ya.
Hi. Thank you. Have a good one.
Bob, Kelly, Kenneth, Pat, stay on, that'd be great. It's like we're all here.
So do we get overtime for this? Time and a half?
In your dreams.
Hi Kelly, long time no see.
Hi. Yeah, it's good to, good to see all you guys on this.
Yeah. What's up, Kelly?
On the screen.
Okay. Maybe Kelly, you can go ahead and describe what the situation is.
Sure. Um, I think these guys all, all are pretty.